Good morning. Good morning. Thank you very much. All right. I'd like to call the order the Conference of the Mobile County Commission in preparation for our August 11th meeting. Do we have any speakers?
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
No, good morning, Commissioner. No, we do not have any speakers signed up today.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ask you to consider the following. One, approve a list of claims. Two, adopt resolution approving Mobile County legal holidays for fiscal year 25-26. Three, adopt resolution revising the Mobile County Commission 26 conference and meeting schedule to accommodate a scheduling conflict of the conference on January 22nd, 2026, with the state of the city and county event as follows. Four, approve appointment of Virginia Davis, a sophomore at Murphy High School, to serve on the Mobile City-County Youth Drug Council to represent Mobile County District 1. Five, approve agreement with University of South Alabama for internship program for students enrolled in the School of Computing and relating fields of study. Six, approve memorandum of agreement among Mobile County Sheriff's Office, Alabama Law Enforcement Agency, and Gulf Coast High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area to designate Alabama Law Enforcement Agency as the fiscal agent for the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Program until December 31st. Seven, approve memorandum of understanding between Mobile County Sheriff's Office and United States Marshal Service to direct and coordinate permanent regional fugitive task forces for the purpose of investigating, locating, and apprehending federal, local, state, tribal, and territorial fugitives. Eight, award bid to Person's Services Corporation for new parking lot lighting for the Eight Mile Shopping Center in the total amount of $214,751. Nine, authorize advertising for bids for 2025-26 detention, intercom inspections, and maintenance. Ten, approve change order number one.
Excuse me. Can we go back to number eight? So we had a lighting contract some months back where we had an issue regarding the contractor's ability as an electrical contractor. I can't, I remember, anyway, have we, can, have we, do we know that this particular contractor can satisfy whatever the state requires on that?
Good morning.
Good morning.
The issue we had was we had no bids at the last time, and so we had to rebid, and this contractor is a general contractor who has the ability to do it in-house. The question that you were asking was back in Creola where the general contractor and one of the electrical contractors had definition of what is an electrical contractor issue, and that has been resolved by the state, and so this contractor is licensed and qualified to do the work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ten, approve change order number one with Vision Security Technologies for Project Public Works Camera System Upgrade for camps 1, 2, 3, and 4. The change order will decrease the contract by $21,278.78, and the new contract will be in the total amount of $465,178.90.
Ricky, are we gonna... Camp 1 is, of course, I guess, Virginia Street right now, correct?
Camp 4.
I mean, Camp 4.
Yes, sir.
Are we gonna, are we gonna change that? Are we gonna call that something else and call the camp, the new camp, something different?
We'll call the new, the new location something different. I think right now it's just the equipment maintenance facility, but we can call it, give it another camp number if we want to.
I just see a couple items that have come up recently about the, about Camp 4. Are we gonna continue to do upgrades on that facility there? And I know we put up cameras and fences and gates and...
Right, so even if we use that just as a fueling station, we would need cameras there, and we would need the fences so that it's, we don't have to have a guard there all the time. So we would still leave those in place.
So the new one would presumably be Camp 5?
Presumably, but that won't, right now, we're not looking at putting fueling there, so that we wouldn't need the same type of security.
Thank you.
Eleven, approve change order number one with Acme Roofing and Sheet Metal Company for roof replacements for John Archer Agricultural Center and the Eight Mile Shopping Center. The change order will decrease the contract amount by $50,000, and the new contract will be in the total amount of $441,000. Twelve, approve appropriation contract with Satsuma City Schools Board of Education in the amount of $3,500 from District 1 education funds for its student writing retreat. Thirteen, approve sponsorship agreement with Trinity Gardens Community Civic Club in the amount of $3,500 from District 1 education funds for its share Thanksgiving project on Sunday, November 16th. Fourteen, approve appropriation contract with Victory Health Partners in the total amount of $4,000 for technology equipment with funds divided as follows. Fifteen, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in the amount of $16,200 from District 3 education funds to cover the cost of pea gravel for the playground at Castlin Elementary School. Sixteen, approve appropriation contract with the City of Citronell in the amount of $5,000 from District 1 education funds to assist with the cost of football uniforms at Rosa A. Lot Middle School. Seventeen, approve sponsorship agreement with the Mobile Arts Council in the total amount of $2,500 for its fundraiser, the 13th Annual Throwdown, a live art competition on Thursday, October 2nd, with funds divided as follows. Eighteen, approve request of the Community Corrections Center to purchase one vehicle from the Revenue Commission reappraisal inventory surplus for the fair market value of $11,000. Eleven, excuse me, nineteen, award bid to Blade Construction for Project Bayfront Park Boardwalk for their low bid in the total amount of $1,023,973, and authorize execution of contract documents. Twenty, approve change order number two with construction labor services for Project Northwest Satsuma Water and Sewer Project. This change order will decrease the contract amount by $55,666.64, and the final contract will be in the total amount of $3,395,983.36. Twenty-one, approve contract amendment number seventeen with Moffett Nickel for Project Cedar Point Pier for the Americans with Disabilities Act Peer Access Design Services. Twenty-two, award bid to Person's Services Corporation for project extension of affluent force main from Bala Batry Wastewater Treatment Facility Phase 1 for their low bid in the total amount of $2,528,753, and authorize execution of contract documents. Twenty-three, approve contract amendment number five with Moffett Nickel for project Redeveloped Bala Batry City Docks Project for construction engineering and inspection services. Twenty-four, award bid to Rogers and Willard for Government Plaza Annex renovations to Probate Judge's Office and Library for their bid in the total amount of $54,282 to be paid as follows. Twenty-five, authorize home agreement with Camellia Square in the amount of up to $1,500,000 of home funds for the construction of a 56-unit senior housing development in conjunction with the Alabama Housing Finance Authority Low Income Housing Tax Credits, and authorize the commission president to execute all documents associated with this project pending legal review.
Okay. Is this the senior house, I think this is Senior Citizen Apartment Complex on Snow Road just north of Airport Boulevard?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Can you get me something on a map that shows me exactly where that's going there in that location?
We can.
All right, thank you.
Do you need any additional information besides the map?
Not right now. I just need to, I wanna see exactly where this is going. I don't wanna see it necessarily, but some people who live in that area in my district wanna know exactly where it's going.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Twenty-six, approve realignment of Texas Avenue in Alabama Port to align with the existing conditions and use as these existing conditions have been in place prior to 1984.
What does this mean?
Yeah, I was wearing the same thing.
We got a request to vacate portion of property, which we did.
Okay, this is in our private road inventory. It shows an alignment of Texas Avenue through an unopened right-of-way, when actually the road that is being used as Texas Avenue is along a different route, slightly, not much, just really just a realignment of the intersection, and the adjacent property owner to the unopened right-of-way is asking that it be vacated so that they can use it. And so to do this, it's just gonna take two items. The first one is to change the alignment to how it's existed for many, many years and show it, you know, accordingly, and the second is going to be to vacate the right-of-way that is unopened and has never been used for a road.
So, so is the alignment, the realignment, is that a function of how we show it on a map?
It's a function of how it exists in the field, in the way it's shown on the map. The way the line is drawn does not match the way the road is actually built and working in the real world.
Okay, so we don't have to go in and do any kind of construction?
Oh, no, ma'am, no. It is just making real-world conditions fit what's actually, you know, what we have shown in our map.
Okay, thank you.
I think there's a lot of, there, in that little area right there, there's a lot of roads that were, I think they were dedicated as roads back in the, 100 years ago or whenever...
1911.
1911, all right, 100 years ago, that really don't exist. If you look at a GIS, it shows roads that are just woods that are, it was dedicated, I guess, right away, dedicated right away for roads. I've got, I've got several more of these requests coming in the near future. It's pretty much the same thing where people have bought lots, and the lots, the two lots that they purchased are basically not connected because the county has some dedicated right-of-way for a road from 1911 that was never, never built there. So I don't know if, I don't know what's happened down there. I think maybe a real estate agent has sold some property down there, and the people who have bought it, they're now realizing that their two plots that they bought do not even meet each other.
Okay.
If I can also add on item 27, 26 and 27 are both associated with this item. The, we're gonna change the wording just a little bit. We'll get with John, and change it to a resolution assending to the request for vacation by Safety and Quality. They're the ones making the...
Okay. Thank you.
Twenty-seven, adopt resolution assending to the request for vacation by Safety and Quality LLC of a portion of unopened right-of-way at Texas Avenue as shown on map prepared by Row Engineering and Surveying dated June 14th, 2024. Twenty-eight, approve professional services with Wilkins Miller to prepare the financial statements, schedules, and notes in an amount not to exceed $35,000 for fiscal year 2025, and authorize the commission president to sign letter of engagement pending legal review. Twenty-nine, consider taking the following action on bids. Thirty, approve renewal of software maintenance agreement with Leeds Online in the amount of $15,561 for the Power Plus Investigation System for the Sheriff's Office. Thirty-one, approve renewal of annual termite agreement with Knox Pest Control in the amount of $320 for the Government Plaza Annex Building. Thirty-two, approve cabling and network equipment with Unity Fiber under the current state of Alabama contract in the amount of $31,056.19 for the county's new fleet maintenance building. Thirty-three, approve renewal of four firewall support with Calm Services under the current state of Alabama contract in the amount of $40,715.15 for the county commission. Thirty-four, approve amendment number two to the existing professional services contract with Hersick and Webster Creative Professionals to add development of park system signage, bayfront park specific signs, and Lewis Landing Wayfinding and interpretive signs tasks, signage tasks, and to extend the period of contract through December of 2026. Thirty-five, approve amendment to Mobile County Park System rules and an update to West Mobile County Park Field Deposit Rates. Thirty-six, approve contract amendment number four with Moffett Nickel for project Dolphin Island Causeway Shoreline Restoration for additional engineering design and inspection services. And Commissioners, we're gonna ask that 37 be voted at conference. Approve reappointment of Commissioner Connie Hudson to serve as the 25-26 District 12 Representative on the Board of Directors of the Association of County Commissions of Alabama.
So moved?
Second.
On the, can I go back to item 35? So in our park system rules, do we, let's say someone violates these, they bring in a food truck. How, what's our enforcement mechanism for these particular items?
Well, I can tell you, at West Mobile County Park, we've had an issue before where an unauthorized food truck has been there, and really the issue comes because we're, we charge the girl softball, we charge them to have concessions there, and it takes away from their, the money that they would make to support their softball program. And in the past, I've had calls about West Mobile County Park, and I've just basically called the police up there and asked them to leave the premises, that they didn't have permission to be there selling food. That's how I've handled it unless there's some protocol that Matthew knows differently.
The general protocol is for park staff to approach the individual first, and typically they'll be responsive and leave. If they don't, then we do have the option of contacting the park deputies to come out and assist. And we've not had a problem where people have resisted, really.
Well, I did, and that's what, and I guess I should add that they were, they had already been approached by park staff and also by some of the staff from the girl softball and said, "Look, you know, we, there's no outside food allowed in the parking lot," and the guy's like, "Well, what are you gonna do about it?" So...
Okay, well, that was, that was my question. Some of these are kinda small things. I guess my concern is making sure that if it's our staff that's enforcing it, that they know that they have a backup.
Yes, ma'am, and the remainder of the items are...
Pretty simple things go real crazy sometimes.
Yes, ma'am. The remainder of the items are pretty small. We've just seen as we've grown and added amenities like splash pad and renting pavilions that there's areas that we had gaps in the rules, like the water balloons, for example, clogging up splash pads and causing issues, so that's, that's what most of these are.
These are gonna be posted?
Yes, ma'am. We have a contract with Hersick and Webster to help develop signs, and so we're gonna work on developing standard park rule signs to post at the parks.
Okay, thank you.
So food trucks would be only with prior approval? They're allowed with approval? Is that correct?
Well, we've had quite a few conversations about food trucks and how we can, is there a way that we can develop a process to allow them? Because typically, a food truck coming into a park would be us giving away a thing of value to that entity, which we're not supposed to do. So coming up with a process to allow food trucks is something that we've discussed, but it's not something that we've arrived at a good answer yet. We are working on a special event permit for, for the park system that would allow for larger events that may include food trucks, so we're actively working on that process, and I anticipate in the next few meetings, in the lead-up to the next few meetings, we'll be having conversations with you guys about that special events permit, and hope to have something on the agenda.
Right, 'cause there's times when that would be a nice benefit, and I'm thinking the sportsplex.
Absolutely. Yep, yes, ma'am.
And I think also, if you, if you rented a pavilion and wanted to bring your, and you wanted to get permission to have a food truck there, that would be different than the county allowing a food truck to be there to serve. Cedar Point Pier in particular, I've had numerous food trucks, like, "Hey, can we bring our food truck down?" And we've just not allowed it because it's not been through a bid process.
And also, if the park is managed contractually by another entity, I think that would be
Right.
a different way to approach it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Approved supplemental agreement number two with Gibson Construction Services for Project City of Prichard Streets, Watson Avenue Bridge Replacement for the temporary relocation of a light pole and reinstallation after the project is complete, increasing the contract cost by $8,460. Number two, approve a non-reimbursable agreement for relocation of utility facilities on a public right-of-way with Spire Gulf for relocation of a gas line for Project Murray Road Great Dream Basin Pave. There is no cost to Mobile County for this relocation. Number three, approve a non-reimbursable agreement for relocation of utility facilities on public right-of-way with Alabama Power for Project Weaver Road East Great Dream Basin Pave. There is no cost to the county for this relocation. Number four, approve or revise proposed plan only of Sandy Creek Phase 2. This is a private road subdivision, and the roads within the subdivision will not be accepted by Mobile County for maintenance. This proposed plan supersedes a previously submitted proposed plan approved by the commission on July 16th of this year.
Is this, is that the subdivision, the powers subdivision? It is? Thank you.
Number five, approve proposed plan only of Long Meyer Trail East. This is a private road subdivision, and the roads within the subdivision will not be accepted by Mobile County for maintenance. Number six, approve proposed plan only of Theodore Highlands Estates 11th Edition. Number seven, approve proposed and final plan of three-notch Kroner Subdivision, proposed and final plan of McConnell Subdivision, proposed and final plan of DePaul Subdivision, and proposed and final plan of Camellia Square Subdivision. Number eight, approve right-of-way and or easement agreement for Track 13 on Brim Drive in the amount of $250 for Project Bass Drive, Brim Stride Drive, Great Dream Basin Pave. Number nine, approve right-of-way and or easement agreement for Track 18 on Moore's Road in the amount of $3,300 for Project Moore's Road Great Dream Basin Pave. Number 10, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and easements from the following property owners for the following projects. Number 11, authorize advertising and receiving bids for Project Andrew Road, Henry Andrew Road, Frank Taylor Road, and Cedar Creek Baptist Church Road Great Dream Basin Pave. Originally, this Pejica project also included Rivers Road and Woodrow Hopkins Road, and we worked a long time trying to get right-of-way for that and have not been able to do it. So we are moving forward with these four, just so they're not slowed down by the other two, but we will...
You said Rivers Road and Woodrow Hopkins?
Yes, ma'am, but we will continue to talk to them, but it's just for now, we don't wanna hold up the ones that are complete.
Thank you.
Number 12, adopt a resolution consenting to the annexation of portions of the following public streets bounded by territories annexed by the City of Sims. Number 13, award bid to Ozark Striping for project safety improvements to Celeste Road and Schillinger Road for their low bid in the amount of $286,438.51, and this is a Rebuild Alabama grant project, so there's not a lot of cost to the county for this project.
What portions of Schillinger's Road and what will be the safety improvement?
This is Schillinger Road from approximately Olpass Kugula Road up to the city limits, which is near the bridge at Country Drive, and there's currently five 12-foot lanes, and we're gonna re-strive it to four 11-foot lanes with a 16-foot center turn lane. So you're gonna make the turning lane a little wider, and that's gonna allow you to offset when your opposing vehicles trying to make left turns. It allows you to see past the one on the other side. And also, it seems research is showing that narrower lanes visually, subconsciously, might slow the drivers down just a little bit instead of a 12-foot, just a little bit of a squeeze sometimes might help the speed a little bit.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And that's all we have.
I'm gonna go back to an item, the item number, I don't remember, but it's the boardwalk at Bayfront Park. Just wanna let the general public know that this construction will not affect any closures at the park. There will be a little bit of, the parking area will be used for staging area for construction material, but the park will remain open.
Nothing else? Mr. Ross, are you with us?
I am, right. It doesn't have to be a gentleman's office.
Okay, thank you. All right, we stand adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, go ahead.
Okay, I was trying to make sure we're matching with the video. My apologies. Great news on the August, the fourth application process began for our homeownership down payment assistance program. That's up to $50,000 in assistance and available to qualified individuals, households, to go toward the purchase of a single-family dwelling located within the designated Mobile County area. So that began on August the 4th, and people can just go to our website, mobilecountyal.gov. Next week is back to school. Aren't you ready for that? Let's help to keep our students safe. Let's remember, don't block crosswalks, watch school zone lights, obey crossing guards... Let's remember, don't block crosswalks, watch school zone lights, obey crossing guards, and stop for school buses. All eleven municipalities in Mobile County will hold elections this month. Make sure you're ready to participate in every step of Alabama's municipal election process, from registration to absentee voting to election day. And here are some key deadline dates. The first one that's coming up is August eleventh, it is the last day to register to vote. Mobile County EMA has a new website. The new website is mobilecountyema.gov. Be informed, be prepared, and be resilient. The National Society of Professional Engineers annually celebrates Licensed Professional Engineering Day on the first Wednesday in August, which was yesterday. So this year marks the tenth Annual Professional Engineering Day, and Mobile County Commission would like to recognize our professional engineers. A few of them should be here in the audience, could you please stand? Yeah, I'll stand. Oh, my. Wow. Commissioners, we probably have about twenty professional engineers on our staff, so if you...
That'd look like a whole lot more than twenty people. I'll stand up and get...
Like, what do the rest of y'all do?
Best that y'all are lawyers, I guess. Lawyers and engineers.
So commissioners, if you can and will, just for a few moments after today's meeting, just meet us at the steps to take a picture with our professional engineers. And last but not least, stay connected with Mobile County. You can visit us online at mobilecountyal.gov or follow us on social media. We're on Facebook, Instagram, X, LinkedIn, and YouTube, thank you.
Good job, Dina. Thought you were making a commercial over there.
Anything else? Ricky says no, so we can adjourn. Thank you.